We'll get the meeting started for February 6, 2020. Opening statement?
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 27, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 27, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 27, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozovic?
Yes.
Present.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser's been excused. Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro's been excused. Mr. Schneider's been excused. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Leggio's been excused. I have not heard from Mr. Everett. Deputy Mayor O'Donnell's been excused. And Chairman Tannenhouse.
Thank you. Okay, could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for those abroad and all of our first responders?
Chief? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
We have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Correspondence?
I have no correspondence this evening.
Resolutions?
No resolutions.
Okay. All right, we'll get into submission waivers. Our first submission waiver for tonight is case number SD-2989, Roland and Anne Willoughby, for a minor subdivision.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dennis Galvin is here.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Galvin, as we talked about earlier today, essentially, our process is we just hand it over to Laura and she tells us how she feels about the submission waivers.
I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three of our January 31, 2020 report. And given the nature of this application, it is a minor subdivision between, essentially, it was two existing lots, one of which was undersized. There are no improvements proposed with this application. So as a result of that, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Newman.
Any disagreement, Mr. Galvin?
No.
All right.
All right. Does the board have any questions? Any other motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve case number SD-2989, minor subdivision for Roland and Anne Willoughby.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bozovic?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Galvin, I'll contact you with regard to the next steps to get you to the hearing.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Have a great night. See you soon.
Okay. The first application for tonight is case number SP-935A-3, Benderson Development Company, LLC, for amended preliminary and final major site plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Stephen Nehmad, N-E-H-M-A-D. I'm an attorney, member of the firm of Nehmad, Preller, Davis &amp; Goldstein. My office is in the southern part of the state, although I do land use work throughout the state of New Jersey and have been for many, many years. I represent the applicant Benderson Development Company with respect to this application for the Howell Commons Center just down the road here. We're seeking to put on a very small addition to the rear of one of the buildings. It's 2,820 square feet and it's to accommodate the desires of a new tenant. We have Old Navy and I'm pleased to say, particularly in these times, that we have tenants that want new space. We have two new tenants, as you'll hear momentarily, Old Navy and Burlington Coat are coming into the center. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call forward the two witnesses I intend to swear.
Can I swear them both together? Sure.
Counselor, swear them in fine. They are Brad Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N, our engineer, Bowler, and Mike Crislip, C-R-I-S-L-I-P, our architect, and also swearing James Boglioli, a Benderson representative, B-O-G-L-I-O-L-I. Gentlemen, would you come forward to be sworn?
Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is a truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, as you're coming up, you know, you'll be qualified.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, would you come forward, please? Your full name for the record?
Brad Thompson.
And your licensure in what, your license in what discipline?
I'm licensed professional civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've testified in front of many boards throughout New Jersey in the past. I've been practicing engineering for 14 years and have been a PE since 2011.
Okay, and you and your firm had what responsibility in conjunction with this application?
So our firm prepared the site civil drawings that were submitted and which is up on the screen there.
Okay.
And you've qualified previously as an expert in your field, professional engineering, with expertise in civil engineering before other boards in this state?
I have.
Offer him as an expert, Mr. Chairman?
We'll accept him.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chris, excuse me, Mr. Thompson, your firm was the original design engineers for Howell Commons, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Would you briefly explain?
Mr. Nehmad, just in order to pick you up on the tape, we need you to be a little closer to the...
I'm sorry.
There's a mic on the tape.
No, the microphone on the table works. You just have to be a little closer.
This is a microphone?
Yeah, it's a microphone.
Okay, thank you.
You can sit if you want.
I can't speak and sit.
That's okay.
Of course I have.
All right, we'll give you the hand mic. How's that?
The old habit, can you hear me if I speak?
We'll just give you the cordless.
Cordless mic.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Would you just briefly explain the small addition that's proposed for this development? First, explain existing conditions and then walk the board through the exhibit that you've shown, the site plan exhibit. Mr. Chairman, I'd noticed that you were, you marked the exhibits previously. I marked the exhibits in order to save time. I therefore marked our exhibits A1, I marked them A1A, A2A, et cetera, so to distinguish them from the ones you previously marked. So the witness will refer to them in that fashion. Would you proceed, Mr. Thompson?
Sure. So the overall site is, I'm going to be referring to an aerial exhibit which is dated December 3, 2019. It is not part of our submission application, so this is remarking as A1A. And it's intended to show an aerial depiction of the center with the surrounding area shown north is to the left of this page. The shopping center is Lot 66 and Block 28, known as the Howell Commons Shopping Center. Previously, it's been located, obviously, in the highway development zone, so there's a lot of existing tenants that, which the use complies with that zone. I'll spare the board going through the list here, but it's worth noting, there's a few vacancies, which I know some things that want to be pointed out, basically, between the Home Goods and Party City, there's a vacancy, and that's going to come up a little later. And there's also two vacancies for smaller, I guess, tenant spaces where the MARA is located. So otherwise, the center is fully occupied, which I think will come in handy later. What we're proposing tonight is probably best shown on our next exhibit, which is exhibit A2A. And this is a renderized version of the site plan sheets. It's, again, this hasn't, this wasn't a sheet that was submitted, but it's intended to show the full site and then kind of the two areas in which we're doing work. This is dated February 5. North is also to the left on this plan. And on the larger exhibit, and then kind of the larger overall area, and then the blow up to the, I guess that would be your left, is a 2,820 square foot addition to one of the tenant spaces, and that is for the proposed Old Navy site. And the purpose of the addition is to expand that space to bring it up to the, what Old Navy considers the minimum occupiable space for that use, which is about 15,000 square feet. And then that is taking place kind of on the northern side of the center. Directly south of that is where we're proposing a Burlington. And those two things are going in the space that was previously occupied by the dress barn, the Petco, and there's a famous footwear. Now, as you'll see in further exhibits, the famous footwear is moving to that vacant space between the Home Goods and Party City, and the Old Navy and Burlington will occupy the three spaces that are vacated by that move. Because most of the improvements are taking place in currently paved areas, we're actually reducing impervious on the site by about 14 square feet. That kind of leads me into the parking. We're reconfiguring the drive aisle and the parking in the rear of the site on the east side of the building. Currently, there's 1,368 parking spaces. We are proposing 1,362, so we're losing six, whereas 1,682 are required. We're removing the parking spaces to allow for what we consider an adequate drive aisle at the rear of the proposed addition for the Old Navy site. We are keeping four of the spaces that are in that bank that you can kind of see, it's up on the screen, and it's also located on our exhibit next to the dumpster area. Four of those existing, I'll call them employee spaces because they're in the rear, are to remain. And those spaces are 18 feet deep, which they were in the previous conditions. So I think because they're grass spaces and they're not parked head-to-head with parking, we feel the 18 feet is adequate because any extra overhang can kind of hang over the curb into the grass area. To understand the parking situation on site, because that's kind of the elephant in the room, we're deficient on parking according to the letter of the ordinance. So we went out on site on January 11, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., which was a Saturday, and that time is considered a peak hour on a Saturday, where most of the traffic coming in and out can be observed. We observed 343 spaces were occupied and 1,025 spaces were not occupied during that peak hour Saturday. Again, that's January, it's after the holidays. So actually, prior to this, I actually went to the site personally on, what was it, December 19, at 5:00 p.m. during a weekday, which is also considered a peak hour time during a weekday, just to get a sense of how the site performed and if there was adequate parking. And that's right in the middle of the holiday rush. I went there and I didn't count every space, but the, my observations, the lot was less than half-full. So I think characterized by the fact that the tenants are mostly, there's only three vacant spaces, and the parking lot is less than half-full during some of the busiest times of the year, we think the parking is adequate on site. And we also don't think the banked parking that was put into effect as part of some of the previous approvals is necessary at this time.
So we're seeking a waiver to reduce the number of parking spaces by approximately six?
That is correct.
And you believe, in your opinion, that that's reasonable because your empirical observations demonstrate that there's indeed a remains in overabundance of parking during peak periods?
Correct.
And you've interviewed management with respect to the adequacy of parking, have you not?
We have, yes.
And what has that revealed?
Their experience is that this site is overparked, and that's been the sentiment of most folks we've talked to at the township as well.
Okay, and there's one other design waiver we're seeking to, in the rear, for an 18-foot driveway. Would you just explain that very briefly, if you would?
Sure, so the addition of the building kind of comes into the existing drive aisle and we show a striped area to the east of the addition, and it's kind of front and center on the screen there, also shown on this exhibit A2A. What you see is a striped parking kind of area for loading and unloading. That's 16 feet wide and it's the whole length of the building. And then beyond that is the drive aisle that we're seeking a waiver for, which is 19 feet wide. And thank you, this is...
Stand corrected, thank you.
Yes, so 19 feet wide for the drive aisle itself and then 16 feet wide for the loading area. We feel this is adequate for the one-way traffic that flows from the north to the south at the rear of the site. We also have a letter from your fire department saying that's more than adequate to allow a fire apparatus or emergency vehicle to pass through there. It's kind of, I guess, full disclosure, the drive aisle is, in fact, 19 feet wide, but there's a pinch point. I think the point that really matters is the corner of that building to the curb line is kind of the tightest spot. It's not dimensioned, but I wanted to make sure for the board's consideration that that's a 30-foot-wide piece of pavement at the tightest spot, which is, again, more than adequate. It would be more than adequate for two-way traffic. We're only proposing one way here.
Now, in your opinion, I take it you believe the design waivers we requested are both reasonable?
I do.
And are consistent with the existing site plan in terms of consistency with the existing plan?
I do, yes.
Any other pertinent aspects of the site plan which you have not previously told us about?
The only other thing I wanted to mention was, just during construction, the phasing of these areas, because of the kind of limited nature, we're thinking that the front of the building, where there's a few ADA improvements shown, mostly associated with the front entrance of the Burlington site, we're going to kind of cone that area off and it should be a quick construction timeline, maybe two months. Most of that time will be spent waiting for concrete to cure, basically. So that's something I just wanted to characterize, that we'll be coning that area off and making sure that, you know, we're redirecting traffic around that area. And in the rear, we'll be phasing this so that they don't affect deliveries that are happening for the rest of the center. And the idea is, the way the utilities are laid out and designed, is the road closure for back there can be kept to a minimum and almost be treated as like a roadway project where they'll allow egress and ingress of those trucks to make deliveries to the existing center.
And can you briefly give us an update concerning other required approvals and where that stands?
Yeah, sure. So other approvals required for this, we have the Monmouth County Planning Board, we have a letter of no interest from them that we can submit to the board. The NJDOT, we are below the threshold that would trigger a DOT access permit, so what we're anticipating receiving from them is what they call a loanee, a letter of no interest based on the threshold and the fact that the new uses and the addition to the building generate less than 100 trips per day. That's usually the trigger that the DOT says, yeah, we're not interested in that small improvement. So we do not have that letter yet, but we can provide that to the board. Should that be a condition of potential approval?
And it will be, yeah.
Right. The Free Old Soil Conservation District, we are over 5,000 square feet. We have submitted and received approval from them for the plans that you see tonight. We have letters of no comment from the Howell Township Shadtree Commission, the Environmental Commission, and the Bureau of Fire Prevention. The Bureau of Fire Prevention did mention what I had said before in their letter, that the distance there was adequate for fire apparatus. We didn't receive any comments from the Howell Township Police Department. We can reach out to them again, but no comments received as of tonight. And the last bit was the Howell Township Utilities. We received preliminary approval and we're basically waiting for the hearing tonight to go through the final approval process with them.
Thank you very much, Brad. No further questions? Any questions in the board would be happy to attempt to answer.
The only thing I would ask, we have three very minor technical comments in our report. Do you agree to comply with those? They're specifically in item six?
Item six, yes. That is something we can comply with.
Okay.
So I can tell you from the police department's perspective, we're not going to have any type of interest in this because it doesn't affect any type of traffic onto the main roadway.
Thanks.
But I do have a question concerning the construction noise and the construction activity around back. Obviously, we have Thousand Oaks Development right in the back there. We also have a development directly across the street on Locust. I know you said about two months in the front for the, most of it for the concrete to cure. What's the timeline around back? Because I know we have a neighbor here that's sitting in the audience.
That's a good question. In my professional opinion, that building could probably be constructed in four to five months. We do have a representative Benderson here, but I'm kind of going out a little bit on a limb, I think.
Yeah.
It's not that big of an addition and I think it'd be completed in that time.
I think among the key components, though, are you will comply with the town's noise ordinance?
That was my question, yeah.
Yes.
And we're, I'm very familiar with the State Noise Control Act regulations and the logarithmic scale and the daytime and nighttime noise levels. We will comply with that in all regards.
Because it's a hot topic right now in the town as far as noise coming from some of our shopping centers. So obviously, as much courtesy as you can extend to our neighbors would be appreciated.
Well, Eileen, as a matter of fact, Representative, my client was just speaking to one of our neighbors tonight and he gave her the card and apparently somebody is dumping material in early hours in the morning. We don't know whether it's unauthorized dumping or not, but we're going to deal with it.
Okay.
We were made aware of it by a well, a good, a nice, friendly neighbor and we're going to address that.
Thank you.
Mike Crislip would be our architect, very briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Miss...
I'm sorry.
I'm not, I have a question and I think Peter does as well. Do you need to, you have a question? Go ahead.
No, after you, I insist.
Well, my question was actually to you guys, Ms. Newman.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Is there, being that they're adding more roof area and collecting the rainwater in a more organized fashion instead of it just running off from the road, is there, is there some improvements to the stormwater management system on the site that needs to be addressed and discussed?
Well, the application doesn't prompt a change in the stormwater regulations, so it would be on them if they're going to connect their roof leaders directly into the storm system to make sure there's capacity, but there's no obligation to do any stormwater management.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And if I may, I can also characterize generally, the roof runoff is considered cleaner than the pavement that it's replacing. So that's another trigger that had us thinking the roof is going to kind of benefit the stormwater system as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With the relocation of the light pole, will there be any significant change in the level of light intensity?
We don't anticipate that to be the case. We had our landscape and lighting department look at that. Basically, the one light pole moving and then that pole is there to kind of help more so identify the curb just because of the fact that it's like undulating back there in terms of a curb line. Most of the build, I'm sorry, most of the light in the rear of the building is from wall-mounted lights that are kind of cast down across the pavement there. Based on what we've seen out there and been on-site at nighttime, we feel it's adequate and meets ordinance requirements.
Okay, and I, the only other question I have, I see there's, there's two doors opening into, is that a loading zone, the hatched area?
Correct, yes.
Okay, do you see any need to have a bollard or any other type of protective device for the opening of those doors?
That's actually a good comment. We can look at that and add that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Chairman?
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Crislip, our architect, Mike, would you come forward? Full name, sir, for the record?
Michael Crislip.
Spell your last name if you would.
C-R-I-S-L-I-P.
What is your occupation, Mr. Crislip?
I am a registered architect, including registered in the state of New Jersey since 2002.
Tell us a little bit about your experience in your chosen profession.
Our firm does a lot of retail design, shopping centers, tenant work across the United States. We've worked with Benderson for probably over 25 years. We've done numerous shopping centers in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, this general area.
And you've, with what firm are you affiliated, Mike?
Onyx Creative.
And where's your home office?
Our home office is in Cleveland, Ohio.
And you are registered in the state of New Jersey, licensed architect?
Yes.
Offer him as an expert, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mike, what has been your role in this application? Would you tell us quickly?
Yeah, we assisted Benderson Development with the design and we're doing all the construction drawings, architectural, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing for a permit.
And would, you're familiar with the building addition as well as the new front facade treatment proposed?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit first about the front facade treatment, because the building addition is kind of, kind of secondary and it's so small in terms of its architectural significance.
The, the front facade treatment is a...
You're referring to an exhibit? Let's identify it.
A3A.
And what does A3A show, Mike?
It is a rendered elevation of the shopping center showing the new area plus some of the peripheral areas.
Okay, would you explain the area that will be modified by the addition of the new tenants and their accompanying signage?
The area being modified includes Burlington, Old Navy.
Okay, would you explain it in narrative, if you would, Mike?
The, the new design is a blend. When you're dealing with these national tenants, they have prototypes that are very important. So we took prototype elements of the entries for each tenant and blended that with the design, the materials of the existing shopping center.
And the new tenants are Burlington Coat and Old Navy?
Yes.
And those are the signs that are proposed?
Yes.
And let's, before we get to the area of the signs, let's talk about the number. Will there be an increase in the number of wall signs or building-mounted signs?
There would be less signs. We're taking three tenants out and replacing them with two.
How about the size of the signs? Would you, did you look at that and could you, would you explain that?
I did. The Burlington sign, the allowable area is 649.6 square feet as calculated by the city's regulations.
Township, sorry.
And Burlington sign is 420 square feet, so it's less than the allowable. Old Navy sign is allowable area is 263.5 square feet as calculated, and the actual signage that's being proposed is 101. So again, it's less than what it could be.
Okay, and the Old Navy also has an architectural treatment that they mount on the front of their facade, correct?
Yes.
Explain that briefly, if you would.
They've got a system of blue fins that create an architectural element as part of the facade.
And when you measure the sign, you measure the lettering and squared that off as a rectangle, is that correct?
Yes.
The Old Navy lettering?
Yes.
And that's shown on this elevation, correct?
Oh, yes, that's what, I'm sorry.
I don't know if everybody can see that. We have a detail of it at similar stores elsewhere, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to see that.
Sure.
Sure. What exhibit is that, Mike?
Exhibit A4A.
A4A. And what does that show?
Indicates the...
It indicates a new tenant signage plus some of the existing signage.
Fine. And we also have a photograph of what the Old Navy sign would look like as they've done in other locales. I think we have a photograph of that, did we not, Brad?
Counselor, I think, is it this one that was in our package?
It is, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Can we mark that as A5A?
Thank you, A5A, if we could, Mr. Chairman. And Mike, why don't you just, does this A5A, which I'm showing, this is the photograph you all have, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just explain that, Mike, if you would. I just want everybody to understand that they have a unique sign program with an architectural treatment behind it.
Well, the fin system is actually part of the storefront facade design, and it's a series of metal fins that are attached top and bottom. And the fins get a little bit thicker in the center area, which gives them an area to mount the sign.
Thank you very much.
So essentially, just so that I can help the board to understand, you're reducing
the total number of signs than currently exist?
Yes.
So there's no relief associated with that? And the total sign area, you know, incorporating the uniqueness of the sign that you just described, is within the permissible sign area in our ordinance?
The...
Yes.
The Old Navy sign, taking the Old Navy portion?
No, 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 yes.
Yes.
Okay. So there's no relief, that's necessary?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, that's essentially what we're looking for on that, Mr. Chairman.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And in terms of the building addition, is there any quote-unquote architectural aspects of that that are noteworthy in any way?
The building addition will be built with the same materials and colors as the entire back of the center, so it'll blend in. It'll have the stripe that occurs back there in the brown, brown block above and below.
Thank you very much, Mike. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have anything further. My concern was just the signage package and noting the differences between what was existing and what is proposed, but I think that's been addressed. The only thing I would note, I know that there's been exhibits marks, but I just would like to have the ability to confirm the sign area as represented should the board act favorably on the application.
By all means.
Sounds fair.
I supplied that exhibit to the board, Mr. Chairman, and, Laura, I don't know if you've received it or not.
Just did.
Okay, great. I'm sorry for that copy.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I have a representative of Benderson here, Mr. James Boglioli, if there are any questions with him, he'd be happy to answer them. I don't intend to call him unless there are any questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Newman? Any questions? Or Peter?
The only thing I want to note is, and I thought Ron asked this question, you did not include the fins as part of the sign area?
No, I, I did not. I looked very carefully at your ordinance, and your ordinance is really very unique. What it says is that, if you give me a moment...
Your ordinance, as you know, refers to sign area, it says the total area devoted to the conveying of the message exclusive of the advertising structure. Then one looks at the definition of advertising structure, and it says any rigid or semi-rigid material with or without a sign displayed thereon, situated upon or attached to the real property, and it goes on, it is almost as if it were written for this type of sign program. So therefore, I applied that literally to this one, and I came to the conclusion, and I think it's correct, I supplied Mr. Ron with a copy of my analysis, that we are within the permissible sign area.
And the facade sign does not project more than 15 inches from the wall?
I don't believe it does.
No?
No.
If it's one moment, our architect is checking.
It's nothing off the building. In order for you to say the wall facade sign, it says it doesn't extend more than 15 inches from the wall.
You talking about the business of the sign?
Right. Come forward and speak into the microphone.
I have a drawing here, but it doesn't have a dimension on the fins, but based on the, the other dimensions on the drawing, the fin doesn't project more than six to eight inches in the sign channels, not going to be more than that, so it should be...
So the answer is, yes, it won't project more than 15 inches?
That's correct.
And that'll be in the resolution, and we'll move on?
Right. Just wanted to make sure that when they get whatever it is they need for the sign, that it's not an issue when they pull their zoning permits. So with that, I think that answers all my questions.
Counselor, you're comfortable with that being indicated in the record?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, seeing nobody has any questions, we'll open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public have any questions on the application, want to make any comments?
I just need you to come up to the mic, raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Jeff Hodges, H.O.D.G.E.S.
And your address?
22 Bock Boulevard, Helen, New Jersey.
Bock, what's it, Bock's?
Bock, B-O-C-K. So I basically represent the fire commissioners for Howell Township. It is correct, they're saying that with these 19 feet width and the 16 feet of striped paved area is perfect for fire truck apparatus placements. My one concern that I have is during the construction, it shows on one of the maps here a temporary soil stockpile, and it tends to shorten up that area dramatically for fire department apparatus placement or even driving through there. They had talked about the construction area, making it look like it would be a street construction. My question would be, are they going to have somebody out there directing traffic if something were to happen? I'm sure there's other trucks that have to drive down that road as well.
Well, I think what we can do with regard to that is, is if there's an approval, we can require a pre-construction meeting, where the applicant will meet with the town and your fire departments, and they can address those issues.
That's, that's fine. I just wanted to bring that up to make sure people are aware of that, because if something were to happen there, they will be in the front and the back of the building, more likely the back, and there's going to be a lot of apparatus coming in, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor, any...
No, we will gladly do that, and we welcome that. We'll do it through your police department or whoever you direct us to, and welcome your input. Thank you.
Chief says Fire Bureau. He's got enough on his plate. Okay.
Fire Bureau, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Sorry about that.
Does anybody else from the public have any questions? Okay.
We've got enough dirt that we deal with.
Seeing done, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Okay, any final comments?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Respectfully, this urgent application is minor, speaks for itself. We're trying to be, accommodate the requests of your professionals, and in these times to have a brick-and-mortar client have new tenants is very encouraging, given what's happened in the economy throughout the country, much less the state. Thank you all very much.
So you're losing Petco? Petco's on, John?
Yes, I think the answer was yes.
You're correct.
Nobody has any last questions? Do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve case number SP 935A-3, preliminary and minor, final, major site plan with the added...
All the comments and everything they agreed to?
With all the added comments.
Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bozovic?
Yes.
Mr. Gerato?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you all very much. I take it the motion included the two design waivers we're requesting?
It's correct, everything that was discussed on the record.
Thank you very much. Our client looks forward to remaining a responsible corporate citizen, your community.
Thank you very much.
It's a great center, it's very well-maintained.
Thank you.
Okay, do, Mr. Cucciaro, I know we don't have any master plan status report, but I know we're going to have to pick some members to be on the master plan. Deal with that at the next meeting?
You can do that at the next meeting.
Okay. Will there be a need to go into executive session to discuss that?
No, that's not something to go into executive session.
Okay, great. Just a point.
And that's within your discretion as the chairman.
Okay. All right, do we have any need to go to an executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do I have a motion?